Certainly can. We're good to go.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Township of Langley, regular meeting for the purpose of a public hearing. As per our usual protocols, I'll be reading the preamble to tonight's event. So, a public hearing is a statutory requirement under section four six four of the Local Government Act and must be held before third reading of a community plan, rural land use plan, zoning by law, land use contract amendment by law, heritage designation by law, or heritage revitalization agreement by law, which would change the use or density of property. During a public hearing, council acts in a quasi judicial role for the purpose of allowing persons who believe their interest in a property is affected by a bylaw, permit, or other matter to make representations to council either orally or by written submission, or add comments, or elaborate upon correspondence that may have already been presented to council concerning the bylaws. It is important to note that council is not in a position to receive any additional information on the bylaws following the public hearing as dictated by case law. The hearing procedure involves an explanation from the Community Development Division on the purpose of the proposed bylaws and to hear from individuals regarding the bylaws. In order to ensure that all interested parties have a reasonable opportunity to be heard, speakers are requested to keep their presentations as brief and succinct as possible and no longer than five minutes excluding time required for questions from council. Speakers will be asked to state their name, neighborhood, and city for the record, and if referring to prepared remarks, to submit copies of these to the township clerk. Decorum must be maintained at all times. This includes refraining from applause, booing, or heckling. To assist with large numbers, the speakers' individuals may advise the township clerk and sign the speakers list prior to the commencement of the public hearing. The names on the speakers list will be read out during the hearing. However, the chair will also call for any other speakers wishing to present their views once the speakers on the list have all been heard. Individuals who have already addressed council and wish to add further submissions will wait until the people that have not yet addressed council have had an opportunity to speak. All submissions and speakers lists are considered part of the public record. Council members should not express their views nor debate the bylaws, but may question speakers to clarify particular points in the submissions. Council may consider third reading or third and final adoption at this meeting or at its next regular meeting to be held on Monday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty. In the Fraser, well, not in the Fraser Presentation Theater, not, not at this point with COVID, so, all right. So with that undertaken, I would like to move to the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. So for tonight's meeting, we have the regular meeting for public hearing and development permits of today's date. Can I have a motion, please?
So move Ferguson.
Ferguson and David Davis, thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, thank you. Okay, there's no development permit, so the subject tonight is a public hearing. C one zero two zero three eight one three, official community plan amendment and rezoning application number one zero zero one seven three and heritage alteration permit application number one oh one three one, Gray Rose, two one six zero zero block forty eighth Avenue. Bylaw number fifty six forty, bylaw number fifty six forty one. And, okay. So to begin tonight, we're going to hear from Mr. Richardson, who's going to give us the background of this application. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, with your permission, I'll share the screen.
Thank you.
So thanks again, thank you, Madam Chair. The subject, Murrayville Community Plan Amendment, Rezoning Heritage Alteration Permit Application, came to a development proposal consisting of two two-story buildings accommodating a total of two thousand nine hundred eighty-seven square feet of ground floor commercial area and two residential units on second stories in the two sixteen hundred block of Forty-Eighth Avenue. The point five acre site is designated in single family two in the Murrayville Community Plan and is in the Murrayville Heritage Conservation Area. This slide shares a nineteen eighty-nine council resolution providing for the opportunity to consider amendments to the Murrayville Community Plan to accommodate limited commercial uses at the intersection of two sixteen street, Forty-Eighth Avenue, and Old Dill Road, subject to the criteria outlined in the resolution. The proposed Murrayville Community Plan Amendment meets the nineteen eighty-nine resolution. By providing ultimate road widening on two sixteen street and Forty-Eighth Avenue, the site is adequate to support the intended use and the form and character of the development is in keeping with the Murrayville Heritage Conservation Area guidelines. This airfoam of the Pixa site located at the southeast corner of two sixteen street and Forty-Eighth Avenue at the Five Corners intersection proposed Murrayville Community Plan Amendment and rezoning bylaws fifty six forty and fifty six forty one, designate the site limited commercial and rezon the site from suburban residential one to comprehensive development zone C D one fifty-three to accommodate the proposed mixed-use development. This slide indicates the proposed site plan with a two-building setback thirty-three feet and fifty-nine feet from Forty-Eighth Avenue to retain the historic view of the Travelers Hotel from Old Dill Road. The proposed includes an interpretive plaza within the Forty-Eighth Avenue setback area. Vehicular access has provided the subly portion of the site from two sixteen street and accommodates easement for the property to the east. The next series of slides are renderings, streetscapes, elevations, and a landscape plan as indicated inherited alteration permit one zero one zero three one. Madam Chair, staff also know that the current proposal represents a redesign from a previous proposal presented in April second, two twenty nineteen Public Information Meeting. The proposal at that time was comprised of a two-story building with a commercial area in the ground floor and residential unit above, plus one townhouse building containing four three-story units. Madam Chair, staff are given support of Murrayville Community Plan Amendment bylaw fifty six forty and rezoning bylaw fifty six forty one, subject to ten conditions, and issuance of heritage alteration permit one zero one zero one three, subject to five conditions listed on page eleven of council's agenda. Madam Chair, a total of ninety-six notices were mailed out, one hundred and seventy-one written submissions have been received, and there were nine individuals noted on the speakers list.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. So as per our protocols, we will go to the first speaker on our list. Madam Clerk has a list of individuals who've noted that they would like to speak. So we will go to the first person. If you could please state your name and address for the public record. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tim Vanderheer. My address is two three seven five zero fifty-four A Avenue in the township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I used to be on the design team for this proposal, but I no longer work at Sightlines as the architect, so I'm no longer involved. However, I live in the township and I grew up in Murrayville right nearby Five Corners. So this area of Langley is close to my heart, and I wanted to speak as a member of the public. In my opinion, there are two important issues for the township in general that this proposal touches on, heritage and parking slash traffic. To be clear, I think the proposal deals with both quite well and would benefit the community. Firstly, regarding heritage. I find some of the dialogue I've heard around proposals like this and others in Langley like it to be quite concerning because the underlying assumption behind it is that anything new inherently damages the old. People will say things like, building anything here will degrade our heritage. It's a minority opinion and they're trying to be responsible and that's good. But that argument overlooks the fact that Porters we see today is on its third or fourth version, that the B and B has been changed and added on to, that the same goes for Sharon Church and the others in that neighborhood, and also that all these buildings have modern sewer systems now and Wi-Fi and modern appliances, et cetera. Change is not inherently damaging at all. What it is is necessary, even productive. Those buildings changed over time because they had to, to stay relevant to their purpose. The same applies to our towns and cities. How do we make sure our town's history is relevant today and tomorrow and into the future? We have to live with it, have it, had it present in our everyday lives. We have to get out of the mindset that anything historic is to be looked at, not touched. That mindset alienates us from actually engaging with our past. It makes history standoffish, inaccessible, theoretical at best. So for example, I think we would all love to have busloads of school kids walk around Five Corners on field trips and learn about it. But to become relevant to those kids, it needs to be part, it needs to be something that is part of their life. Maybe they go to one of the small shops in this proposal and they're immersed in the area, and it's not just school anymore. It's lived, it's Saturday with grandma. They're interacting with history, it's not a museum piece. Basically, what I'm saying is that not building in our heritage areas is what is really irresponsible. But keeping them relevant, part of our modern lives, is necessary to appreciate our past. Proposals like this one do that. And briefly, the second point about parking and traffic. We want fewer cars on our roads for lots of great health and safety and environmental reasons. So what do we do? We push all the shops and services way over there, out of our neighborhood because we don't want their parking lots. But now we have no shops or services close by, they're way over there. So now we all have to hop in our cars and drive to them. So what do we get? More cars on the road. If we want fewer cars and less parking, the only thing to do is put services close by everyone's front doors so that we can walk or bike to them. I applaud council's initiative to make sure fifty percent of all trips are by active transportation very soon. It's proposals like this one that are needed to meet that goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for clarifications from council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your delegation. The next person on the list, please. Hi, could you please state your name and address for the public record, please?
Certainly, Vivian Smith, two one six eight seven forty-eight A Avenue.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My husband and I moved to Murrayville in two thousand and fourteen, and when we moved there, I was so thankful that the township had allowed development in that area because this is my forever home and I love living there. I love living in Murrayville. I'm sure many of you feel the same way about your homes. And I will admit that at some level I thought, please don't let any more development come to Langley. I love it just the way it is. But I do know, like most of you, that that's pretty unrealistic, that we do grow, we do evolve, we do emerge as communities and as societies. So perhaps it's not if we're going to grow, but how. And so when I looked at this development at Five Corners, I looked for three things. I was initially dismayed at the thought of losing the landscape of that lot, particularly those bulrushes. I am an avid gardener and I was devastated to think that they might be lost and then so delighted when I saw the plans that showed, in fact, those bulrushes would stay in place. The second thing I looked for was the character of the building. When you look at the surrounding buildings, the Princess and the P, Porters, what is now Tracy Cakes, the churches, the medical clinics, there is such a rich character to the heritage of our neighborhood. And I felt that this new development actually fit in very well and would complement our neighborhood. The third thing that I looked for, and I say this with respect to anybody who may be working for a large company, but honestly, I did not want a cookie cutter business coming in. The thought of being able to have small businesses that complement the other small businesses coming to Five Corners and enriching our community felt to me to be a positive move and I would speak in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council for clarification? Counselor Woodward, go ahead.
Thanks, I just want to clarify that I wish Vivian Smith all her best in everything that you're doing and appreciate everything you did for the Langley Memorial Hospital Foundation while you were there. That's it.
Thank you very much, Eric, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on the speaker's list. Hi, could, hi. Could you please give us your name and address for the public record?
My name is Sharon Martin. My address is two one six three eight Forty-Eighth Avenue.
Thank you.
Can I start now?
Yes, please, thanks.
Okay, Sharon Martin, I'm a direct neighbor to the east of the parcel. I own and operate the Historic Hotel with my husband Wally and daughter Angela. We'd like to share four major objections to this proposal. Our first objection is the quality of the report. We do not accept that citizens are supposed to be carefully analyze a report in which numerous pages are too blurry to read. Also, a report that includes numerous supportive comment sheets and only a few opposition ones from unknown citizens at the Public Information Meeting. When we know the process for collecting those comment sheets is not controlled by township staff, how is it possible that these sheets hold any weight in the report? Makes me wonder if any sheets of opposition were simply not submitted to township staff. This system is flawed and it needs to be fixed. My second objection. We do not accept being told by counselors that we will never be happy with anything on the land next door. Yes, we will be happy with a project that respects the heritage value of the hotel as described throughout bylaw two six six one. Bylaw two six six one states that the Parks Canada standards and guidelines for the conserva, con, sorry, conservation of historical places in Canada will be used as the basis for all applications. The Parks Canada document thoroughly describes heritage value and the importance of the overall setting defined as, and I will quote, "the immediate and extended environment that is part of or contributes to the structure's significance and distinctive character." It follows that in quotes, "A good strategy for the preservation of the setting of a historic place is to ensure that adjacent property owners are aware of its heritage value and how interventions on their property can affect that value. We do accept a single-family residence with a single built-in work unit and five parking spots. We accept a scale of building that is subordinate to the hotel and historic corner as a whole, as described on page thirty-three of bylaw two six six one. We accept a separate dedicated access to our rear parking lot, absolutely not having to drive through their parking lot to access ours. This is not an acceptable long-term solution." Our third objection. We do not accept being told by township staff that we need to learn to get along with our neighbors. This is in reference to the Public Information Meeting where we were appalled to see on the plans that, again, the only access to our rear parking lot would be through the proponents' sixteen-car parking lot. We have enjoyed twenty-three years of unfettered private access and we cannot accept anything less. Our fourth objection. With the prospect of multiple commercial units, we're deeply concerned for the level of quiet enjoyment, safety, and security that we as a family and our guests currently enjoy at the Historic Hotel. The commercial component will bring crime. For example, the entire west side of the Historic Hotel will be lost to a narrow backside of Commercial Building B. Were the pictures brought up? We were supposed to display pictures. Oh, so the pictures aren't being shown? Oh, that's a shame. Well, we did send them. And the entire west side of the Historic Hotel will be lost to a narrow backside of Commercial Building B, complete with their garbage rooms at the back end and a large outdoor plaza at the front end, connected by a hidden corridor perfect for shady activity. These narrow commercial backsides are notorious for chain link fences, barbed wire, garbage, and rat boxes. We have zero tolerance for this, all too common occurrence. We did take pictures that we emailed to you to show you how relevant and important it is to have this, to not have this buffer between a commercial enterprise and our residential historic bed and breakfast. Thank you for hearing my objections and I hope you will vote against this extremely damaging plan. This is your chance to stand up for the preservation of our Langley Township history. Our township is still so young. Don't let the pure and delicate historical roots of the Murrayville Five Corners be over-commercialized and lost. Please do not make this mistake.
Thank you. We actually have a couple of questions from counselors, so first is Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. If you have the, that submission and the pictures, you can leave them with a clerk and we can review them prior to making decision at third reading.
They were emailed.
Okay, so we'll make sure the staff get them. Okay, thank you very much for submission.
There's fourteen of them, thank you.
Thank you. And there's another inquiry from Counselor Whitmarsh.
Hi, thanks for coming today. Just a couple of times you've referred to the Travelers B and B as a residential property and I, I was understanding that it was like a hotel and, or a bed and breakfast kind of hotel. Can you, can you just clarify for me that it's either it's residential or is it a, a kind of accommodation hotel kind of place?
Well, I'm not an expert on this, but I've been told that it was, because it's a sleep, it's like a residence, a home, so that's why it's residential. I have, my husband's right here. He might be more able to give me the, the details of that. Would Wally be allowed to answer this question? I don't have the.
Chair, maybe staff can, can answer that.
Maybe, maybe staff could help answer. Just to clarify that it's, is it residential or is it a commercial property or a commercial building you have there?
Ours is supposed to be residential.
Mr. Richardson, do you, can you help us in this regard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Travelers Hotel is subject to a heritage revitalization agreement that allows the bed and breakfast use, which is a commercial use, and has an appropriate business license for such.
Okay, so how, how many, how many rooms or how many people can stay at your place in an evening? Or how many rooms do you have?
We have six rooms.
Six rooms, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the speaker's list, please.
Hello, Wally Martin is my name, two one six two eight Forty-Eighth Avenue, Langley.
Thank you, you have five minutes, thank you.
I'm going to answer that question. Bylaw last year, Community Standards Bylaw number five four four eight clearly states that every hotel and motel in Langley is a residential property. And it's a really big problem because it excludes the residential property from complaining about high levels of noise on a commercial property, a specific exclusion only for properties that share a property line. Any other person can complain about noise, apparently, except us. And we're the ones who need the quiet the most. So that's a really big, a big issue for us. So those definitions are in bylaw Community Standards five four four eight. I'm going to go through the staff report line by line. There's a lot of errors. And I want to point them out. Page one, I, I'm assuming you have it with you. The rationale says it complies with the Murrayville Heritage Conservation Area policies. However, it fails to point out that we have to also comply with the Parks Canada requirement that is a part of the Murrayville Heritage Conservation policy. That's a much more onerous bar to get over because it, it basically classifies us the same as a national park in Canada. And which means that we we have to sort of present our place in a perfect pristine park-like condition and that actually extends beyond our property lines. That document's three hundred pages and I think you should read it and, and absorb it because it really defines a heritage spot that is a a part of the, they call it the character defining conditions and we have to stick with that. Okay, on page three, sorry. Page two talks about site servicing. I understand that the storm sewer in the area may be inadequate. This property is extremely wet and there's going to be a lot of water. They talk about water retention on site. They can tell you that's absolutely impossible to do. It's a basically, the lower half is actually bulrushes. It's a complete wetland, ducks swim on that property through half the winter. There won't be any onsite detention as is referenced on page three. In the executive summary, it talks about limited commercial use. That's complete nonsense. This proposal is full-blown commercial use, the entire main floor, not only is there the spaces in the bottoms of the two buildings, but there's also a matter of the two patios apparently, or more than, multiple patios and a plaza. The size of those, unknown. So I think the mathematical calculation is completely wrong because they haven't, I don't think they've accounted for those sizes. Unfortunately, the documents that were provided to us, and I have them all right here, most of the measurements are, are not legible, so I have no idea if any of this is correct or not. In referring to limited commercial use, there's nothing limited about that, that use. Moving on to page four, second paragraph, we're talking about feedback received at the Public Information Meeting in a year ago. None of that feedback is in this document.
Excuse me, Mr. Martin, I, I apologize for interrupting. As per our statutory requirements, you have five minutes. So if you could just kind of wrap up in thirty seconds and then you'll have an opportunity later if, if you have other points to bring forward after everybody else has spoken.
I've got a hundred and fifty-two pages to go through, mercifully for you. A lot of them are illegible, so I won't be talking about those. Actually, about half of the document i- is not legible, so it's actually a waste of time to print it. So I won't be dealing, so it's going to be shorter than you think. I, I've rehearsed this at home. On two occasions, we actually made a video recording of my voice and that has actually been sent to township. So you can actually listen to the entire thing in the quietness of the council office. So I'm going to get through as much of it as I can and I am going to take advantage of those additional time slots.
One.
Should I sit down?
Yes, thank you very much. So we'll go through the speaker's list and then if you have some other points you haven't been able to make, you have another five minutes after we've exhausted the list. So can I have the next speaker, please? Hello, hi.
Hi.
Hi, can you please state your name and address for the public record?
Hi, I'm Angela Martin. My address is two one six two eight Forty-Eighth Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and counselors, I work full-time for the Princess and the P Hotel in all areas of the operation. I'm doing my best to exceed the high standard of hospitality that my parents have set over the last twenty-two years. In fact, we currently have a four-point-nine star rating on Google, which I challenge you to find at any other hotel in any other municipality. The Martin family story at the Murrayville Five Corners started twenty-three years ago. My parents, Sharon and Wally Martin, saved the original settlement building of Murrayville from demolition, now lovingly known around the world as the Princess and the P. And I sound emotional because I am, but it will pass, so excuse me. Incidentally and quite serendipitously, through a genealogy research project, we recently found that my mother and I are directly connected to the Murray- to the Murray family who originally came from Rogart, Scotland to build the Traveler's Hotel. So it's incumbent on me to stand here proudly as a Langley Township citizen, as a Murray family descendant, and as a protector of our delicate history to plead with you all to reject this proposal as it is. The Murrayville Five Corners is a very special and unique place that will fade if you say yes to this commercial development. The immediate five-corner area is made up of all original settlement buildings, not a single twenty-first century replica. It's perfect and it does not need to follow in the footsteps of the Fort Langley area in its overpriced commercialization. If you allow the construction of a twenty-first century complex right in the middle of this historic cluster of buildings, the special character of the historic landscape will be broken permanently. In your decision on this proposal, are you considering bylaw two-six-six-one appendix eight A, page twenty-three that states, in terms of the concentration of built heritage resources, Murrayville is of the most intact early areas in the township. Collectively, these assets present a unique opportunity, not only to preserve, but also to enhance this already important heritage community of Murrayville. Mayor and councillors, do you believe the presence of building B will enhance the iconic west facade of the historic hotel? Or will it be shrouded? Referring to bylaw two-six-six-one appendix A, page twenty-six, it states that the historic hotel is a legally protected scheduled heritage property. It's protected under specific guidance from Parks Canada Standards and Guidelines for the Conservation of Historic Places in Canada. This document describes the heritage value of protected buildings like the hotel and the importance of the overall setting, which is defined as the immediate and extended environment that is part of or contributes to the structure's significance and distinctive character. It follows that a good strategy for preservation of the setting of a historic place is to ensure that adjacent property owners are aware of its heritage value and how interventions on their property can affect that value. Mayor and councillors, in your vote, are you considering how this construction will change the heritage setting of the hotel and other protected buildings? Do you think the addition of these buildings contribute to the extended environment that adds heritage value? It seems to me that the adjacent property owner is not aware of that, that their intervention, especially building B and the sixteen-car parking lot, will negatively affect the heritage value of the historic hotel and other protected buildings. In reference to bylaw two-six-six-one appendix A, now page thirty-three, will council consider the section on infill buildings and new construction where it states, "Design concepts for proposed new constructions should attempt to blend harmoniously with the historic elements of the streetscape. This requires sensitivity to historic precedent and a willingness to be subordinate to that precedent." Mayor and councillors, do you believe the proximity of building B is positioned in a matter, in a manner, excuse me, that is sensitive to historic precedent? The scale of the complex as a whole is a far cry from subordinate. I love the hotel and I love the historic Five Corners. I hope I can, I can have the opportunity to live up to the challenge, to protect it for years to come. Murrayville Five Corners is a jewel among us and I see more than ever that we have a lot of work to do as protectors of historic Murrayville to educate the rest of our community how significant this place really is. Please don't let historic Murrayville slip through your fingers. Please say no to the development. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. We do have a question for you from councillor Richter.
Uh, yes, and thank you very much for your comments. Uh, the comment that you made relative to the parking lot having a negative impact on the federal standards, do you have confirmation of that from federal authorities?
Uh, no, you know what? I, what I was doing is, of course, I, I did make a quote from this document that's part of the bylaw uh, of the, the Parks Canada Standards, uh, and it talks about the overall setting of, of historical places and the landscape as you see it. And, you know, the parking lot to me is an example and it's, it's sixteen cars, it's a large scale, takes up a large area, and I just don't think that that contributes to the overall setting of the historical area. Whereas what I, what I did suggest, and you know what, maybe I didn't say it here, but what my mom said, uh, because we're all speaking from one voice, my, my mom, my dad and I, uh, she mentions the, uh, the actual number, like five parking spaces that would be associated with a residential building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we have another question from councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Mrs. Angela Martin, for speaking today. I wanted to ask you, um, you've mentioned a few things regarding our bylaws of page numbers and uh, the di- the difficulty with building, I wanted to ask, have you had the opportunity to talk to our planning staff and development staff regarding uh, building heights, regarding uh, building materials, heritage designation and the, and the like, if I may?
No, I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody specifically. I've just read through the document and, of course, uh, presented what I did, uh, but I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. See no further questions. We'll go to the next delegation. Hello, thank you for coming. Hi, could you please state your name and address for the public record?
My name is Miguel Rodriguez. And my address is nine oh two seventeen forty-nine Robson Street, Vancouver downtown. I want to start my presentation in this way. I am a new Canadian. And I will tell you my, what I learned in all this process. I learned only to get my war permit, only to get my permanent resident, and my citizenship is to love my country. What we are here today is to protect the Five Corners, protect our history. We cannot allow to make a mistake. I had the opportunity to read all these PDFs, all this information that all of you giving to us, citizens, British Colombians. We are people that we want to protect our integrity. During all this process, when you sign and you sing, sing, sang the, the National Anthem. I'm sorry, I need to say something. English is my second language, but I cannot allow, my heart is really, really mad. Only to see that permit in two sixteen, in two hundred sixteen, only to see five buildings, the church, the hotel, the restaurant, the clinics. I cannot believe it. My experience in Canada in the last fourteen years, working with one of the most famous and successful developer in Vancouver. He has a farm here. He has a related, he has a family members in Abasport. And I'm here because he taught me one thing in real estate, to buy land, to develop something. It's, it's a principle. We don't fool around with our history. That developer make a mistake to invest in a land, in a piece of land that we knew was receiv- he knew was residential. Now he wants to change it. I can't believe it. I can't believe that we are here. We need to protect who we are. These five buildings, they have integrity. It's, it's not only one building. It's five, it's twenty. I asked him to think if he's right. He gambled wrong. If he would buy this piece of land two blocks away or to the north, to the east, to the west, I agree. We can come and talk and say, hey, let's change the zoning. But how come we are here? We have rules in the heritage. We need to protect the view, the landscape, the, the landscape, the neighborhood, as well, we leave that beautiful Five Corners. They are so peaceful, they are safe. Why we want to bring more chaos? We're in the middle of the pandemic. If you put a patio with all these, today in the morning that Dr. Bonnie Henry say, it's top gatherings. This would take another two years. It's common sense. We, we need to think hundred percent if we need that type of project there. It's a residential, let's keep it in that way. I'm here because as well I saw on Facebook, in social media, a video, the Wally Martin post. And that, that video has more eight thousand views. And we are here and the community, the Latino community and all the Latinos that we work in constructions, I don't think we agree in destroy our Canadian history. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I see no questions, so thank you for your presentation. Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Trevor Rod. I live at two one nine five four forty-sixth Avenue in Murrayville.
Thank you.
I am a born and bred Langley boy, proud to live in the township and uh, proud to have been here for forty-two years now. Um, I came tonight, um, after, uh, I, I just heard the previous speaker talk about a video that was posted and I came to uh, speak a, a little bit about that, um, and I came to speak in favor of the project. Um, I've been following this project for some time. Um, I used to own the property along with some other people, um, several years ago. And uh, I know the challenges with the property and I um, I have, like I said, followed this project with great interest. Um, I have attended both of the public information sessions. Um, and I have to admit, the first proposal that was submitted, I was not in favor of. However, I am in very much favor of the new proposal. Um, I think the developer has addressed all of the concerns that I think a lot of the people in the area had. Um, and has done a very good job of that. Um, he's incorporated um, smaller building sizes, um, more landscaped area. He's addressed the wetlands. Um, the view of the Princess and the P from the corridor of um, Old Yell Road, I think has been addressed very well. And I think the size and structure of the buildings really fit the area. Um, one thing that I think council really needs to consider here, look, there's a couple of different things. Um, one is the use of the property, not just what the zoning is. Every property around Five Corners is a commercial use with res- with a residential component. Porter's is a commercial use with residential component. Tracy Kakes, the same thing. I think it's almost irresponsible to think that this property should only be a residential property. Um, the other thing that uh, I think we need to remember here is just because we're building something new doesn't mean something else is lost. Just because we're putting up a, a building here doesn't mean we're taking down a heritage property. Um, it's important to recognize that, um, just, I think it was the first speaker, things do need to change. Things need to happen in order to keep areas relevant. And it is important also to note that properties have been developed in this area recently, right directly next to the Princess and the P on the other side, has been a passive house built. And I quite like the building. I think it fits the area. It fits the, the uh, the look and feel of the community. It hasn't taken away any of our history. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no question. Thank you very much for your delegation to council. Um, so we'll have the next speaker, please. Hello, can you please state your name and your address for the public record? Thank you.
Uh, name is Chad Sayers. Address is two four four two six fifty-eight A Avenue in Langley. Uh, we, uh, my wife and I moved out to Langley nine years ago. Um, raising kids, we've uh, decided to set long-term roots in Langley. Um, we feel the overall development, the overall idea of this project really fits Five Corners. Um, the architecture, the design, everything fits. The history of the corner. Um, we uh, we feel it's a picture-perfect solution to incorporate history and honor the land in the community. The developer has gone, I went to the previous information meeting and I saw the change that they adapted. It was quite a significant change, uh, reducing the size. Um, and uh, I said, I do, we do stand with it. We do a lot of uh, traveling, a lot of work through the community there. So we definitely feel that this is a project that fits the uh, community very well.
Thank you. Um, I, I thank you for your delegation. I see no questions, so thank you very much for coming. And can we have our next delegation, please? Hello. Hi, could you please state your name and your address for the public record?
Jordan Michael, one nine nine five one eighty-eight Avenue.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Jordan. I live and work in the township of Langley. I wanted to come out tonight to express my support for this proposed development at Five Corners. As a lifelong Langley resident, who grew up in Murrayville and a past student of the historic Murrayville Elementary School, uh, I'm deeply familiar with the Serian question, its unique value to our township and the importance of ensuring its care for generations to come. I had the opportunity to attend two public information sessions for this project over the span of a two-year period. Both times I attended, I was personally impressed by the care with uh, the developer, the architects and the presentation staff took when discussing the development uh, with community residents and considering the best possible use for this property. They were kind, responsive to feedback and genuinely interested in seeing to it that this land is best used with our community in mind. In my view, uh, this project fits the quaint feel of Murrayville neighborhood and introduces a needed contemporary element to this historic property, similar to the nearly completed reunion project just up the hill on forty-eighth Avenue. The proposed building materials and discussion of maintenance and preservation of the property's existing oak tree are all great and sustainable features that I like particularly in the proposed development. Overall, I believe that this project has moved in the right direction for this neighborhood and an excellent future location for community-oriented establishments that focus on promoting Langley businesses and our local history. Uh, thank you for taking my input into account.
Thank you. I see no questions, so thank you very much for your delegation. I think we may have one more speaker on the speaker's list. For first-time speakers.
Hello, council, how are you this evening?
How are you?
Wonderful, thank you. My name's Matt McGill. I reside at uh, four six seven one two fifteen A Street. Um, just wanted to kind of go over the project that's, that uh, you guys are speaking about. I've lived in Murrayville for the last twenty-five years. I've gone to school in Murrayville. I own multiple properties in the Murrayville area. Actually, one of the properties that I own is uh, just north of Porter Stores. It is in the Heritage Conservation Area. Um, I'd had a look at what Gray Rose has done here and uh, I quite like it. Um, I'm kind of sick and tired of looking at a field at Five Corners and I think it's time for some progression. Um, I don't see how twenty-six hundred square feet, I believe it is, of commercial is going to drastically uh, destroy Murrayville or the Five Corners. Um, and uh, I've, I think it's a great project.
Thank you very much. I don't see any questions from council, so thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you. Two more? Okay, I've been advised we have two more speakers, so.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Karen Lovays. I live at one six one four five Eighth Avenue in Surrey. I'm here today because I have been a Realtor for thirty-two years in the Fraser Valley. I am a licensed real estate professional in the province of B C. But I would like to tell you that almost fifty percent of my business is Langley Township. The other fifty percent of the, my business involves going outside of the Langley area to do interesting, unique things. I've been all across B C in my career of thirty-two years and I want to let you know that this little circle of Murrayville is extremely unique. You are blessed to have this unique piece of property. And I am wanting to let you And I am wanting to let you know, I'll give you a little bit of experience. If I, I have a set of clients, empty nesters coming from Vancouver. And they first want to experience Fort Langley. So I take them to Fort Langley and I show them some properties. And then they want to go to White Rock because some of their friends live in White Rock. And we go to see properties in White Rock. Most of the time they say, Karen, we want something unique. And I say, okay, come with me to Murrayville. Look at this. I encourage them actually to spend one or two nights at the Princess and the P. Most likely, they are going to fall in love with Murrayville and choose to live there. I have other experiences where people move to Abbotsford. And I pull them out of Abbotsford and bring them back to the Langley Township, most likely to the Murrayville area. When I look at this plan and I've studied this plan and I studied the plan before this. When I look at this current plan. What I see is a strip mall. You might see a building with some cute little dormers, but I remove the dormers from my head and I look at the plan. And I see a strip mall. So I would actually like you to look at the plan without looking at the fancy pictures. And look at how large this is for an actual single family dwelling lot. I think it would be a shame to build something this large in that location. Does anyone have any questions?
Seeing none. Thank you very much for your presentation to council. And yeah, thank you for coming. And I believe we have one more speaker on the speakers list.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It comes along here. I was just wondering, is it appropriate for me to ask staff, the delegate mentioned something about a single residential lot. Could staff, do you mind if they?
To clarify? Yeah, we'll ask Mr. Richardson.
Is it a single family or double for more than one family? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Madam Chair, thank you for the question. The lot is currently zoned Superma Residential One. That would permit a single family residence with a secondary suite and a lot coverage of thirty three percent. The current proposal is a lot coverage of twenty two percent. In addition, the designation in the plan currently is single family two. And so the appropriate lot size for that, if it was rezoned, would be seven thousand square feet. And R one D in terms of the zoning, which is the zoning surrounding the subject site. That was to be achieved, there could be two lots of seven thousand square feet, each with a primary residence. And a secondary suite in each. And a lot coverage up there for each lot could be up to thirty five percent. Hope that answers the question.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And we have another speaker. Hi, could you please give your name and address for the public record?
Yeah, hi, my name is Joshua Reed. Address is unit one oh one, two three one six five Old Yale in Langley. A little bit about me, I've lived in Murrayville for a decade now. And my wife and two daughters previously Walnec Grove since nineteen ninety four. So I have seen the development of things. And prior to that, I lived in sixteen homes by the time I was fourteen, anywhere between North Vancouver, Metro Town, Alder Grove. And Surrey. So you could say I'm a bit of a Canuck. This piece, I came into this meeting neutral. I don't normally attend these kind of things, but for this it hit home. I'm not on social media, so I don't know about what's going on in regards to the views and stuff. Obviously, I do hear things. I was at Five Corners at the Porter's getting a coffee and I noticed there was a petition. And so, you know, I signed it. Not really knowing what I was signing for, other than, you know, I wanted to. You, your, anytime there's change, your back's always kind of up against the wall and, you know, I signed it. So I didn't have time to do homework on it. And I thought, you know, well, if I really want to see what I signed and what's going on, I should attend this meeting. So here I am. I stayed at Princess and the P, my wife and I have, and they do a five star job there. It's pristine, it's great. And even have electric charging for your vehicle. And all sorts of nostalgic things from Tinkerbell and, you know, you name it. So anyways, without going too into that, I basically just kind of want to talk about what I've taken from watching this meeting and watching everyone speak. I think that with me coming in on a neutral ground, I'm seeing there's a lot of unknowance. I'm actually really quite surprised that this has come this far to vote already, that even it's been approved to some sort of an extent. Without really everyone knowing, I mean, we have questions on this call. Counselor Ferguson asked, you know, delegate from Princess and the P if she understood the levels of commercial and if she read through the documents. Well, you know, I think that's a pretty unfair question, considering that, you know, she has a job full time and, you know, doesn't work for the township or city. Or things like that. And, you know, as residents, we do as much as we can and they're really, our hands are really tied with COVID. Because you really can't do as much as you used to. There isn't a lot of hands on and everything's gone digital. Which also, you know, speaks to what I've observed as well. There's been some emails left out. And so given, you know, technology and given the lack of transparency that we seem to have. I'm surprised that. That those were left out. It would have been a simple forward. We don't need to print things. We need to stop faxing things. We need to get to modern times of government. And especially starting in the township of Langley in our backyard. That's kind of my opinion on this. And in regards to, I just kept some little notes here. In regards to the zoning, you know, like no one on this webinar knew if there is, if it was residential or commercial, those other properties. Which shows me that, you know, I think that, you know, respectfully, I think that, you know. People need to go back and do a little more homework on this and voting on this would be kind of presumptive to assume that, you know, we have good faith in these drawings. And when I was watching the drawings at first, I go, these are nice. These are good. It looks like it's going to be okay. And then, you know, you see one side and then you see the other side. Oh, what about the garbage dumps? And what about the barbed wire? And then I started thinking, yeah, what about that? Right? What about like what's happened to Fort Langley? I used to walk to the Toolman in Fort Langley and with my buddy and we'd put things on a tab. You know, I'm not that old, thirty nine, but you know, it's come a long way since then. And Fort Langley is not the same. And the residents there were told the same thing that everyone's telling everyone on this call. That everything's going to be fine. It's going to be restored. It's going to be good, you know, and all these things. Well, if you were around before in Fort Langley and if you've driven through now, it is not the same. It is not the same at all. It's far from it. And if you, if you open up one commercial zone. Then what happens to the residential land down the street? Is that going to change now to another residential zone and so on and so forth? So I think the way that it's been done by the township is clever and it works in a way that allows to keep heritage restored is by keeping residential with an asterisk and an exception. Which is fine tuned and combed. And I think that if it was me, I'd vote against it because there's just not enough. There's just not enough information right now and there's not enough, there's not enough certainty. And until, you know, whoever bought it, I heard someone from South Surrey bought it, so someone who's not even from Langley or the township or even Murrayville purchased this property. And for me, just the fact that they're requesting a change of proposal shows me that their intentions of the property were not to keep it such. And why are they buying residential zone with the intentions of changing it? To me, it just doesn't look right. And if it is right, you know, that's fine. Then let's talk about it. Let's see the blueprint. Let's see the back alley garbage. Let's see everything. Let's have full transparency on this. So that we don't make a mistake and turn, you know, Five Corners into, you know, Fort Langley.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. Your five minutes are up and we have no questions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have we exhausted the speakers list? No? Oh, she's cleaning. Cleaning's good. Oh, Mr. Martin for a second time? Okay, so I'll just give a little bit of an explanation here. Oh, okay. Well, I'll go ahead and do that now. So you're allowed to give us another five minutes. And you can focus on things that you've not been able to have time to discuss before. So please go ahead.
We would have liked to have had the opportunity to speak to the Heritage Review panel. They looked at these drawings apparently and they thought they looked okay. Unfortunately, they do not deal with the issues that we are intimately concerned about. And that is the proximity and how it actually affects our guests, how it affects a historic hotel. So that's a big problem for us. So, you know, I respect their ideas about color and roof angles and this and that. But honestly, none of that matters to us. Our question is our survival. Our question is, how do we make sure that our guests have the same quality of guest experience that they've enjoyed up until now? And the answer is quite simply, they're not going to get it. So in terms of, when you look at page seven, the sighting, we are losing. We are not, they are not, as other speakers have said, having the view of the hotel. The view of the hotel has been there for a hundred and fifty years and it's going to be gone. I mean, they're going to see the front corner, but that's completely a false thing. And it totally flies in the face of the requirements of the Parks Canada Regulations, which a scheduled heritage property. Follows, and that's in the bylaw, has to follow those rules. It can't be compromised. The view of the hotel must be pristine. Eliminate building B, move building A back about twenty feet or so. So the line of sight from the center of Old Yale Road is unobstructed for the entire hotel building. Like Sharon said, a five car parking lot works for us. Now I'm going to be able to skip a lot of these pages. We're a protected heritage site. I don't see any protection in here at all. We're talking, we're talking about the, how this other, these other buildings look. And you know what? Maybe they're cute enough in their own way, but that's not heritage. The heritage is the, is the seven properties that wrap their arms around the Five Corners. That's what people come for. Now we have a guy jumping in there. He grabs this piece of property, wants to rezone it, wants to sort of, on the backs of the hardworking seven owners that wrap around the intersection. Wants to make a big fast buck on, on our, and basically. Tell the people that comes to us, think, oh, we cute, living here in this beautiful heritage intersection with no concern of the devastating consequences. We will lose a lot of our business, if not all, but the simple fact that we're going to have a lot of noise. You've got a plaza five feet from our bedroom window. People be smoking, drinking dope, who knows what on that plaza. And don't tuckle about it because it's a fact. And you don't even, in City Hall, you don't even allow smokers within six feet of the front door or six meters. And they want to be a meter and a half. The fence, there's a fence there. I can't get up the side of the building anymore to do my maintenance. Who's going to come down and do all the maintenance on the side of the building? I can't get up a ladder up there anymore because there's going to be a fence blocking in. They call the fence a buffer zone. That's not a buffer. A buffer is a space. If you think a buffer, a fence is a buffer, put a fence between a condo and a pig barn. It's not a buffer. You need space. You need distance. We need distance. Because that's the only thing that'll stop the sound. No other option. Whereas you can't build a thirty foot high concrete wall to stop the sound. We can't. It's a heritage building. You gotta see the whole side of the building. And actually, they're going to block it. They're going to ruin the view of the building. That, that, that's, character parks don't have that. Go put Chuck E. Cheese's in the middle of the National Historic Site in Fort Langley would be the equivalent of what this thing is. It's just a disaster. Covered community standards. We're going to be zoned. We're not, we're not commercial. That's a complete fallacy. People are saying that we're commercial. We're not commercial. We're residential. Look at the bylaw. I'm just going through this a lot faster than I'd like to.
Sorry, Mr. Martin, you have about a minute and thirty seconds left. If you can just focus on your.
It takes thirteen out of a hundred and fifty two pigs. What do you want me to do?
Sorry, that's our limit.
Well, it doesn't work for me. I thought we were here for a public hearing to hear everything. And I think I'm entitled. I put, I put, we, between us, we've put six hundred thousand hours into that corner. And I get five minutes to explain it. It just doesn't work for us. No feedback. They talk about feedback. The feedback wasn't there from the, from the, it's not in the report. The report is full of endless mistakes. It's an outright lie that they still want to have the view from Old Yale Road. It doesn't exist. Talk about the windows. We get fifteen windows facing the side yard into a blank wall of these commercial, these backs of these commercial buildings are completely blank. They are completely destroyed. Our view, and not only that, what's even, what's more important is the, what makes the historic, what makes a historic building is what it looks like. Plunking commercial buildings in front of a historic building is wrong on every level. This is all in the report. So the, it's the. The multiple plazas.
Excuse me. Sorry, excuse me, Mr. Martin. I'm going to have to ask you because five minutes is well passed up. And we have another speaker and you would be able to finish up after hearing that other speaker. And that will be the end of the list. Thank you. I think we have another speaker for the second time.
Hi, guys. It's me again.
Hi, thank you. Do you have something to add that you weren't able to?
Yeah, I do. I just think that in terms of a level of accountability. Where and who is accountable for all the unknowance, the missing emails, the missing feedback? I mean, that's crucial. That's critical. How can you make a decision on something as big as this and you don't even have feedback? You don't even have the emails, the photos of what might look. The whole thing just, it doesn't add up. And it, to me, it's just disappointing being a township resident, knowing that this is what's going on in the background. It, you know, respectfully and no disrespect to anyone on this call, I don't know what goes on behind closed doors. But there are some things that aren't happening clearly and I don't know why they're not happening. But it all goes back to the intentions of whoever purchases property. And I can guarantee you that. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Also, oh, pardon me. There's actually hands up. Is he coming back? Sorry, we have some questions from council. Yes, Counselor Victor?
Yes, I'm just wondering, what specific missing feedback and emails are you referring to?
Well, there was a document apparently that was supposed to be sent. There was emails of the photos. From everything I'm just taking back from this, from this webinar. You guys should all be taking note of this. Is there anyone else taking note of this? Am I the only one who caught that? I'm pretty sure that I'm not the only one. I don't know. I'm not on payroll here. Anyone here in the township? Anyone know what's going on with the missing emails?
Hello, excuse me. Can you keep the focus of your conversation specifically on this application?
I am, I am, I am. I'm talking to the township. I'm talking to everyone on this call right now.
Not to be impolite, but I think you've made your point on that particular matter. We do have another question for you.
Okay, well, you said, you said, what about the emails? So no one said anything about the emails. Do you, does anyone know about the emails or no?
I don't know.
There's photos on the emails, apparently.
Excuse me, through the chair. The emails actually all have been sent to council. They were received as a package on last Thursday in a distribution list, received today in a distribution list. And the remaining ones that came late this afternoon after eleven o'clock will be forwarded to council for their distributions on Thursday. All of Mr. Martin's pictures were included in it. I went through them all on the weekend. So we think council has received everything, but just with the. Large volume, they may not have had time to get through it all.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
And then so all those are going to be viewed before everyone votes on? When's, when's the vote? Sorry, I'm just catching up the speed on things. I'm just.
It won't be this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is there a vote, is there a vote this evening then?
No. And, but we do have another question for you from Counselor Long.
Well, thanks, Madam Chair. And I was just, you know, I didn't want to get into a discussion with the delegate, which is your instructions in the beginning of this meeting is not supposed to be a back and forth. But there are plenty of emails, believe me. And I think you may have referred to not seeing the pictures, but we did get all those pictures at both. not seeing the pictures, but we did get all those pictures that both Mr. and Mrs. Martin referred to of the pictures of the alleyway and pictures of other hotels. So.
Okay, good to know. Yeah, it just sounded like one of the other delegates in the, in the early beginning stages mentioned that you guys didn't get them.
So that's, if he checks again, he has them.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you very much. That's it.
That's it? You're good? Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have one more for the second time.
No other speakers for the second time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Just Mr. Martin would like to speak again.
Okay, thank you.
Page 73, the architect is writing a letter. And he says there's a traffic impact assessment. Where is it? It's not in this document. He talks about unfitting uses. What's he talking about? He says that he removed noise impact and carbon monoxide danger to guests by moving the parking a distance away. He, he's making a big deal of the fact that he's not going to turn our house into a gas chamber. I don't think that speaks to make this plan. People have said, oh, this plan's better than the last plan. Well, I guess being alive is better than being dead. I don't think, taking credit for not putting carbon monoxide in our house. I was, I was, the first hearing, that first set of drawings should never ever have generated a public information session. I, I, I'm reeling in shock about that.
Excuse me, excuse me, sorry, could I ask for a little more respectful language to the proponent in our process? I'd appreciate it as the chair.
Well, I get pretty excited when stuff like that happens because, and I apologize Madam Mayor, that, that I get worked up about these things, but honestly, how do you deal with that? And the private road, we, they belittling the fact that we want to, I gotta tell you about the private road. We've had a private road for 23 years and it's worked perfectly. We have not hit one moment of conflict. At the last council meeting, while you were sitting here, Angela was at the B and B. And the developers employee came in with a truck to put up the green sign announcing that it was under public hearing. Angela asked him to move his truck because he blocked our driveway. The very first day that we're getting involved with this guy. He was rude. He was disrespectful and Andrew, and he took pictures of our daughter. And she has a witness. There was a guest at our house and the guest was just completely shocked. So anybody that's going to for one minute say that there's not going to be conflict. I'm going to say that you're going to have to leave a security guard on that property 24 hours a day because we're not going to put up with that. We want nice, you want me to be respectful. I want them to respect us so that we can drive without, without any kind of conflict. As we've had brides stay there that, or they're doing their hair and makeup. They, they order the limo. It comes at two o'clock. They don't need it until three o'clock. They park in our private driveway. Now they're going to be parking in the, in the conflict zone. And somebody's going to come out and say, move the limo. The bride isn't going to agree to that. She doesn't have to agree to that. Brides don't have to agree to anything. They can call the army. I'm going to tell you, the army is going to melt like ice cream on a hot summer day. So we're going to have a huge problem with that driveway. So that's besides the quiet enjoyment, that's what we need most of all. Lots of space. We want that. It's the oldest building in the township. And, and you're just going to throw some cheap commercial building, a step, step code three building. That's as low as it gets. That's as low as it gets. That's what we're going to get there. There was some comment about our building a new house next door. I'm quite prepared to spend an hour or two talking about what we did on the next door property. If, if that's going to get brought up in this meeting, then I'm going to want to have an opportunity to talk about it. Because we did everything right. I've been building in this township longer than anybody since 1965. I took out my first building permit. There is not one builder here in this township that was earlier than us.
Excuse me, I, I, I'm, I'm always apologetic, but we need to keep to the topic. You're running out of time and we have some questions for you.
I was answering questions that were put on the table. I have a few more notes that I made from the earlier ones. No, we did not add to the B and B. It's a complete structure in its own.
Okay, well, that's, that's aside from what we're talking about in terms of tonight's matter. Would you be willing to entertain some questions at this time?
I'll answer questions for the next year.
Okay, councillor Davis, please.
I, I hope it doesn't take a year to answer this question, but you had commented to speaker, to, to, one time ago. And you said it rather fast. I just wanted to clarify. You had said remove B, building B and slide building A back and reduce the parking. Could you just clarify maybe a little bit more what that really means?
I, I've said from the get go, for years I've said this. It's a residentially zoned piece of property. A house on that property with a home based business is perfectly fine with us. And we don't care how big it is. It can be big. It can be 5,000 square feet. A home base, there's, there's lots of ladies sewing masks right now. That's a home based business. That's not limited commercial use. Or what this gentleman is proposing, the developers is proposing is not limited commercial use. He's doing full blown commercial use. So a house with an in-home business, don't obstruct the sightline. We have a, I call it the line in the swamp because it's not sand. It's normally the line in the sand, but it's the line in the swamp. And no, we don't want that. We, we're talking about a climate emergency. We get wetland. That's every inch of that. We don't want a, yeah, we don't want a sidewalk through the middle of that, that wetland. But there's the line. It goes from the middle of Old Yale Road and it comes straight down to the back of the hotel. I said a photograph. I don't have to show you that photograph. You've seen, everybody's seen it a thousand times. It's famously painted by Brian Kraft. There it is, right there. It's the road towards the hotel and that is our.
There you go, yeah.
Oh, you can't see anything. Oh, God.
I could see.
I'm looking at you. You look so live up. You just look like the council room there. Anyway, sorry about that. Anyway, I sent you this in a beautiful painted format and it's in your, it's in your package. So.
Thank you. I, I, I do have another question. Oh, sorry, I apologize. You have another question?
You had talked, you, you're just talking about view. And that picture is, is a little bit hard to see, but just could you clarify? Like there's five buildings that people have talked about. And they all have view from a corner in there. Could you just clarify why you think that that building, it, it will actually, your building will be the one building that will be obstructed by view? So just clarify the view. Yeah, I'm just, yeah, just clarify the view lines on the current proposal.
The current proposal has buildings that sit completely in line with our west wall. So here you can see right here what, what they're talking about. This is our front of our building here. Here's the front of, front of their building there. So Nancy, hold that up for me. So there you can see the, where, where the, the three buildings are. They're crammed up against us. The, again, this goes right back to the heart of, they call it in Parks Canada, character defining elements. It's what it's all about, whether it's the National Historic Site, the wood wall, the, the way the buildings are situated and the fact that you can see them all with complete clarity. We are in that category. And to cover this up for some kind of a strip mall, and that, it truly is a strip mall. It's a strip mall with little houses on top. And it had no redeeming heritage.
Just to, just to clarify that, Mr. Martins, that all the other buildings, you can't do that to. You're the one heritage building that, that, or Parks building. So that's, I guess you've clarified that point and you're the one that's getting, okay, you've clarified my point.
Thank you.
We're the only one with an empty lot beside them that's going to get subjected to this abuse.
Thank you. We do have a question from councillor Victor. Councillor Victor?
Yes, thank you very much. I would just like to ask Mr. Martin if he can answer it. In the event that this application might proceed, and of course, we won't know until the vote's taken at the next meeting. What are the minimum things that you'd like to see done to mitigate the impact on your, your bed and breakfast? What are the minimum things that would be necessary to make this a palatable neighbor for you?
No plaza. We don't want outdoor dining and partying and smoking at any time of day or night. Because when guests stay at the B and B, they don't run on township Langley time. They might be coming to visit a relative in Langley, but they maybe have flown for six hours. They, they might go to bed at one in the afternoon. There's no, they have no, our guests have no concern about what the township noise bylaw is. They're completely outside of that. We need peace and quiet 24 hours a day, just like we have right now. So outdoor dining, any kind of outdoor, the, the commercial activity is going to be relentless. I don't know what kind of product, this developer has no business at all, none, zero, that he's going to put in there. I, I would say we would want at least 10 meters, but the, the line of sight that we talked about, completely unobstructed. So however that works, there's plenty of room there to do that in this, in the present zoning. And they can actually run a business there as well. So it, it completely works for, for, for that. But the minute you try and get greedy and stuff all this other stuff in there. The three, two, at least two patios and a plaza, we have no idea how much the square footage. And the, the mathematical calculations are completely bogus because they don't allow for that extra outdoor space. That's commercial space as well, by the way. You don't just talk about the space that's inside the walls. So the driveway, an unfettered, I think is the word. Actually Fred Preppin said that in his report. I'm going to leave, I, I hope you've seen that one before. It's the use analysis, and it also clearly states in it that the, that we're going to have, he uses the word unfettered. I like that word because it's so, so powerful. But unfettered by development or line of sight. So the sightline is crucially important, the distance, the, the distance, the private driveway. We don't want garbage bin conveniently, this is, this is a complete market disrespect up against the, our, our kitchen window, we're going to get the garbage bins. And Angela's worked in hospitality all her life. She can tell you about back alleys around hotels and, and all kinds of commercial businesses. This is where the garbage is. That's why we went around, we didn't, we didn't fabricate those five photographs. Those were taken right here in Langley between Starbucks and Travelodge on the, the Blue Turpin on Glover Road and the commercial use beside it. It's the, the 88th Avenue, the Highway Hotel, and the commercial uses behind it. On the other ones are not quite in the township, but just over the border in Surrey. The, the Westward Inn and Wendy's, the Westward Inn and Wing's Restaurant. Take a drive, go out and look at them. You'll be horrified what you're going to see. Most unpleasant, unsavory place on the planet. You think people are going to stay in a, we have the highest, Angela, to her credit, she has magically done this, that she is the top in keeper in the world. So why in any stretch of the wildest imagination would anybody consider jeopardizing that in any way, shape or form? We're here having to defend that. It's just, it's just a disgrace.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think we have a question from councillor Ferguson.
Mr. Martin, I did want to clarify a couple of points you've made this evening. You said something about building the largest house 500, 5,000 square feet or greater. Would you be concerned about setbacks with a house that large?
Well, as long as it stays far enough away from it. I, I'm not overly worried about a single family house and, and a basic in-home business because that operator is going to share a common value with us. People who rent commercial spaces are completely foreign to us and, and will be foreign to them. They're going to live there. We're going to be talking about somebody that's actually going to be living on the property. None of these.
My question, if I, if I may, you know, well, actually, okay, I'll finish off this question. Have a second question, which is a little bit simpler. If the person was not to proceed with this and something else, there is a designation for somebody to build a house next to you. And I think the setbacks are set up in, in the bylaw without going to public hearing. So in a way, you could be caught in a situation where people are just building a house close to, under designated setbacks. Would you be concerned about that?
You can talk with your, your, your zoning chief here. I'm sure Ramon can answer the question, but no, you have to. Anybody that builds on that property has to pass the hurdle of a heritage alteration permit, which means that council can ask for anything. You can ask for anything. You can change the setbacks, everything. You can change the site coverage. None of that applies. The minute you go into heritage alteration, the reason for that is quite simple. It's to protect the heritage buildings that are there first.
Okay, so my next question.
They all have to take a backseat.
Okay, I think you answered that. Thank you. I, I got the, I got the message on that one. I think the next one is just a simple one on the drainage. You know the area quite well. Where is the water drained to, if I may, if you live in the area?
Where does it, where does it?
Where's it drained? You know the area quite well.
Well, it goes into the storm sewer, I assume. And honestly, I don't know if anybody's done a calculation lately, but you build a whole whack of, of new drainage pouring into that pipe from up the hill, these different complexes. And I'm assuming they're all coming down. I haven't studied the pipes, but you know what? You, you, the minute you, and all of those, those developers are using ground covers that are imperious. So all the water leaves the property. Now, we build a passageway. We don't leave one drop of water leaving the site. We designed our whole system completely different than this township scheme of building big rock pits. Those are a disaster. They never worked for any length of time, maybe five, 10 years. And then what? End up like our poor neighbors with the tree, cost them 50 grand because they couldn't cut a tree down. You know, that, that's the problem. You have a whole bunch of problems. The water leaves the site. This is the lowest piece of property in the entire quarter section. All the water from Maryville basically goes down to that line.
Okay, thank you very much indeed, Mr. Martin.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I think we've exhausted the speaker's list at this point. And so I will ask three times if we have any further speakers to speak to the matter for the first time. So is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the matter? Is there anybody else?
I just want to take a couple more comments.
No, sorry, sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, but it's pretty short.
What's that? Oh, sorry, I'm getting, I'm getting some feedback about your ability here to speak. Okay, I, I've received some instruction from our clerk. And apparently I can call for the speakers, and if there's no more speakers, then Mr. Martin can come back for five more minutes. So I will carry on with my quest to find another speaker. Going twice, do we have any other speakers to the, to the matter? And for the third time, are there any other speakers to the matter? Seeing none, Mr. Martin, if you can come back and give us your final comments. Thank you.
Well, you know, it gets pretty mixed up when you have to go on all these different segments. But I gotta say, this report is a bit of a disaster. Half of it is illegible to start with, how you could, how you can expect anybody. I haven't even had a chance to look at the drawings of this thing because I can't even, even read them. I can say one thing is those, those two buildings are basically leaky condos. You know, the, the worst design you can imagine. They have covered balconies with, for the rain pores. And those are not heritage design. Heritage designed buildings have nicely pitched roof, at least an eight 12. They have good sized overhangs and they always have a veranda. I don't see any of that on these, these buildings that are represented to you. These, this, they, the, I gotta say, the artist who drew that is truly a master of deception. The, these, this, they, uh, the, I gotta say, the art artist who drew that is truly a master of deception. And, and I, and I'm sure you're used to that because nothing on the ground is gonna look remotely like that. I do wanna mention in, in here, they have reproduced, uh, some of my emails, not all. At the first public information session, which has been referred to here a number of times already. That was introduced as part of the, uh, hearing tonight. And I would like all of my emails going back to the previous, uh, input session. I, I've attempted about 25 times to contact this, uh, this, uh, development group. And I've been met with a complete wall of silence. You know, the, it, this, uh, the, in the, uh, the report here from the architect, he, he comments on that. He says, "I'm not interested in talking to him. I guess he just thinks I'm some kind of a babbling fool that knows nothing." Well, you know what? I just happen to have a, a bit more experience than anybody, anybody here tonight. And on that team or anywhere else for that matter. And so he says in here that, uh, oh God, I can't even find it. But anyway, he says, uh, he wasn't interested in hearing from us or talking to us. He, he kind of makes fun of us because we happen to have a vested interest in this corner. And yes, we do. We got 600,000 hours in that corner. Now I'm getting 15 minutes. I can't explain my whole life in 15 minutes. Maybe somebody else can, but I can't. There's far too much at, at stake here that we're gonna just let it go by. So. Any more questions?
Um, I, I'm, I'm looking at the, the list. I don't think we have any further questions from council. There may be an opportunity, um, if there is, um, any questions that council may feel that Mr. Richardson could address at this point, prior to the closure of this section of the public hearing, before we hear from the proponent. Is there any from council? No, seeing none? Okay. So now we will hear from the proponent.
Okay, Mr. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a very simple question from Mr. Richardson, if possible.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
It's ve- very, very simple. It's just, the zoning as it is, if no one, without not needing for a public hearing. In other words, if somebody's just to build anything on it, a, a small house or something, uh, would they be allowed to do that, Mr. Richardson, if I may?
Uh, through the chair to Council Ferguson. As noted previously, the current zoning of the site is suburban residential one. But as noted, it's in the heritage conservation areas, so there would be a heritage operation permit required. It's important to note, though, that there is a zoning entitlement in place. So council's deliberations that we have would be, um, based on the heritage alteration area guidelines. It can be thought of as akin to a development permit.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you. And we have a secondary question from Councilor Richter to Mr. Stevenson, please.
Turned on here, sorry. Um, yeah, just to follow up on Councilor Ferguson's, uh, question and also a comment that we just heard. That, um, the, or the, the neighbors would be happy with a 5,000 square foot house there. Is it possible to put a 5,000 square foot house on that lot? With its existing zoning?
Through your worship to Councilor Richter, the lot aside from the proposed dedications, there is about 15,000 square feet by memory. The zone allows for 33% lot coverage. So that'll be potentially a ground floor area of 5,000 square feet alone, let alone the nine meter height limit, which will allow us, which would accommodate a second story. So it could be quite substantial structure there. With the, uh, proviso, though, that there would be a heritage alteration permit required.
Okay, and just, uh, and what would, for, if someone was gonna build a big, single-family home like that, what kind of setback do they have to have from the property line?
Well, once again, there would be a consideration by council for a heritage alteration permit. And that would be the specific proposal. However, the SR1 zoning currently has a 9.75 meter front lot line setback, a 7.5 meter rear lot line setback, and a three meter setback from a side law line.
Okay, so three meters is 10 feet then, right? More or less?
Through, through the chair to Council Richer, that's correct. And staff also note that the building B that's currently proposed is at 3.1 meters.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. All right. So now we're at the portion where we hear from the proponent, and I see he's in place. Hi, could you give us your name and address, please, for the record?
Uh, my name is Gord Claussen, Silly's Architecture, uh, 2316096 Avenue in Fort Langley, and I'm the architect for the project.
Thank you. You can proceed.
Okay, um, I'm excited about the project. And it's because, uh, I'm convinced this project is absolutely rounds off the five corners in a way that honors its history and gives benefit to the community. As it's been stated already, um, this is, uh, we, uh, we've done two designs. The second design, uh, that we've shown to, uh, the community was at a, a public input opportunity, um, uh, time in September. We had designed a denser site, um, with a commercial building and four townhouses. And after presenting that one, uh, April, uh, 2019, um, we knew that we had to relook, um, our assumptions. With the second design, we heard, uh, the neighbors' concerns, and, uh, we believe we've honored them. Uh, we know the history of the area and we've respected it. The feedback we've received from people, our second, uh, public input opportunity, we felt was very positive. Of the 22 comment sheets that we received that day, 16 were positive, four were neutral, and only two were negative. And just as a note, it would be extremely negligent, uh, of me as an architect to not provide all the comments that we've been provided. So, um, I know that was mentioned. And, um, it's just, it's just, would be terribly negligent of me not to do that. So, uh, we were happy to have the second, uh, public input opportunity. And that, because it set up a healthy dialogue with the community. We, we met with the proprietor of the, of the bed and breakfast in person at least three times and exchanged, uh, many emails over the course of two years. Uh, we met with our neighbor to the south, um, at least twice, and exchanged many emails with them as well. And in addition, we've met, um, with other neighbors, um, at least nine separate times. Uh, we've met with the, uh, Township of Langley Planning and Heritage Staff, um, numerous times in person and exchanged countless emails and phone calls. So we've, uh, we've spent a lot of time on this project. Now, I have to start with the Murrayville history to explain our proposal. Five Corners is the birthplace of Murrayville. Uh, it's very important to note, on our site, the site we're working with, there has been two buildings in the past. Historical, uh, pictures show, uh, show us that there were stables on the site, uh, from as early as 1906 and up until at least the 1930s. And more historical photos show a general store, commercial building, located right at the corner, uh, during the 1930s, at which time the stables were also there. So the early last, uh, early, early century, two buildings shared, uh, our site, commercial, uh, retail use and stable. Our proposal's design is based specifically on, uh, those two, uh, buildings, which historically stood on the, that spot. And our design incorporates elements taken from both the stables and the general store. Now, I wanna, uh, quickly outline how we listened very closely to the neighbors', uh, after our second PIO. We hired a traffic consultant to make sure that we were not adding too much traffic. We cut the density of the proposal, proposal in half, uh, lot coverage for our, for our current proposal at 22%. Whereas an example, the bed, the, the bed and breakfast, um, lot coverage is 32%. So speaking of being subordinate, I think we've, we've met that. We made the buildings appear to be, uh, a story and a half, uh, in height, uh, with a two-story tucked into the roofs. We will provide a right-of-way and a cross-access agreement for the B and B to enjoy continued access to the rear of their site. Um, we are proposing a, a community outdoor space for the neighbors and visitors alike to enjoy. Um, we asked the neighbors to tell us which, which types of uses they wanted to see on this corner. And they told us, um, small food, drink places, artisan, artisan uses, uh, health and wellness uses, boutique shops, uh, small professional offices. And we work with, uh, closely with staff to write these into the zone of the property. We retain the wetlands, uh, or the, the wet landscaping of the north, the west corner of the property. Uh, we moved the parking away from the, the, the bed and breakfast. Um, we feel that the home-based businesses are good for, uh, the environment and reduces traffic when people can, uh, work from homes. If we now compare our proposal to the neighbors, the neighborhoods, uh, neighborhood buildings, you see that our proposal's density matches our neighbors very well. The form of the proposal is, is it similar or even smaller than the neighbors', uh, than our neighbors' building sizes? The reason for the two buildings in, in this proposal is to be, um, more respectful and have less impact on the heritage character of Murrayville, and to be consistent with the neighborhood rhythm. One aspect of the proposal is the view of the, the bed and breakfast from Old Yale. We recognize that the view, um, uh, as well as the buildings define the character of, of an area. We took great care to acknowledge the view of the bed and breakfast from Old Yale Road. There's no prescribed view of the bed and breakfast in the Murrayville OCP or heritage guidelines. But we were guided by planning, uh, planning to expose at least the front facade of the B and B when we started the project. After several meetings with the township, um, we decided to expose the entire front of the, of the bed and breakfast and the gable side of the, of the bed and breakfast. We included that perspective, uh, view in our proposal to the township and at that presentation to the neighbors so that they could see, uh, how that was maintained. Our presentation to the public included much more than we can communicate in a short time. And the reaction we see from the neighbors was enthusiastically positive, uh, in general. Uh, again, 16 of those 22 comment sheets were really excited about the proposal. Four of the five people who contacted us after the PIO spoke highly of it. We ensured that all comments and sheets and emails were included in the report you received about this proposal. The proprietor of the, of, of the B and B has spoken repeatedly against our project. It's very, he's very vocal and very persistent, but, uh, from what we have heard, his opinion about our project is a minority opinion.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I think your time is pretty much up in terms of fairness. And we do have some questions from council for you. So Councilor Long, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Sir, yeah, it was a mention by one of the delegates about the location of the garbage enclosure. Would you like to comment on that? Is it possible that that could be moved away from the hotel?
Uh, it, it could be. Um, the, I just wanted to, to confirm with council that the, the garbage enclosure is a, actually an enclosed room. It's not, it's not like an open air, uh, garbage facility. It's a, it's an, it's enclosed inside, inside the building. And, and to, to add to that, we have buffered the door to that garbage, um, room with, uh, with landscaping. So, um, uh, is there a possibility of moving it? There, there probably, uh, might be a way of considering that, but it, it will take up, it will take up commercial space that we felt was better to be exposed, uh, to the west and to, to 16. But I, I think we, honestly, I think we've done a good job of, of, of not, of, of, uh, enclosing the garbage inside an actual room.
Okay, well, yeah, but I guess moving the bins in and out can be disruptive to, uh, folks, and having it on that side could be an issue. Anyway, I just thought I'd bring it up because that's what the delegate had mentioned.
Thank you. Councilor Ferguson?
Mr. Claussen, thank you very much for coming. Uh, I did wanna ask you, I did, but I wanna ask you a question regarding the existing, uh, back access to the neighbor's lot. I guess the neighbor's lot being the princess in the peak. Right now, they have a kind of a laneway that goes there. Uh, in your development proposal, you are going to retain some kind of a setback for them? For park, for the, uh, access lane?
Well, the, the access lane is actually our, our, um, um, dry aisle that accesses our parking. So that, that's, that's gonna be the access to, uh, or the proposed access to the, the back of the, the bed and breakfast. So, and, and again, as I mentioned, there would be a right-of-way and a, um, receivable, uh, agreement for, for cross-access.
So he does, the, the, the neighbor wouldn't have to worry about somebody blocking access to. And were you also gonna preserve or protect a, a tree or something there, if I may?
Yeah, there, there's, uh, there's one tree, um, on the west, the, the, the west part of our, or, so the west of our parking lot and north of our parking lot, that, uh, um, that the owner to ourself wanted, uh, 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 wanted preserved. Um, and we've, we've done that.
So is it a heritage tree or something like that, or I'm not sure?
I'm not sure it's heritage. Um, it's, it's a significant tree, though.
Okay, okay. And my next question, well, is the, um, I asked the, the other, uh, owner, the neighbor about drainage. Can you tell anything about your drainage plan?
Well, we, we have a civil engineer, um, and we, we do have to follow, uh, township engineering guidelines for, uh, for retention. And, and we've, we've, uh, we, we have our, our civil design done already. And, and, um, uh, we've been, we've met the requirements of, uh, township engineering.
Okay, and my very, very last question, Mr. Claussen, is, um, the step code and your, um, what you're going to do with either the building materials and, um, either on, on the same level, step code or going beyond, if I may?
Okay, so, um, we'll be, we'll be into the step three, uh, step code, um, uh, as per township requirements. And that typically means, um, insulation on these buildings, um, use of HRVs. And so, so we, you know, we'll be, we'll be, um, uh, meeting those requirements. And step three is, I mean, I, I would say is, is for, uh, for buildings like this, uh, for, for early owners. So, um, it'll be, it'll be a good, tight building.
Okay, thank you most, very much, Mr. Claussen.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Richter, please.
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, the, um, Mr. Martin has indicated that they don't want a plaza, um, on their side for sure. Is it possible to move that plaza to the 216th stru- side of your development?
It would be, it would be very difficult with, like, there's the room, the room that we, that we have, um, um, and the way we cited the buildings, would, wouldn't allow for that plaza to, to move over. Like we, uh, in terms of the closest, the closest that plaza is to the property line, not to the B and B building face, but the property line is 8.2 feet from the back of the bench. You, you might, I don't know if you see the site plan, but there's a bench, um, on our site plan that's, that's up, up against the, um, uh, the, the, the court, or the plaza. That, that's 8.2 feet away from the property line. So, uh, to, to us with the buffering, there, there is good distance, um, uh, from the plaza to the, to the bed and breakfast. But to move the plaza, I think it, it, um, it would be quite a detriment to the, to the development if we had to.
Okay, and another concern that was raised was chain link fences. Are you planning to put a chain link or barbed wire fence or something in like that?
No, I'm not, I'm not sure where that came from.
What kind of, are you gonna put a fence in?
It, it would be a, a typical residential type wood fence.
Okay. How high?
You know, like, well, six feet was, was, is, is the, the bylaw. We would, we would always, we've always wanted to work with, uh, the, the, um, proprietor of the, the bed and breakfast. And so we would, um, if we're allowed to go forward, we would wanna work with, uh, with him to figure that out. So he can have access to his, to his, uh, his side of the property, of course, and to provide access to his building for, for maintenance.
Okay, and the last question, and Councilor Ferguson did touch on it. Uh, is it possible to redesign your parking lot there to put the access road at the very end of the property? And maybe access into your parking lot from that road?
Yeah, and that, that's part of that, the, the, uh, Council Ferguson mentioned the tree. The, part of that is to, is to save that. Um, we've tried, I, to be honest with you, we've tried many iterations to try to, try to, to, to make, try to make that work. It's just in terms of, um, of getting the, the number of parking spots that we need for, I would say, fairly, fairly, uh, small, uh, building footprints. This was the best, the best way to, to make it work.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. And Councilor Coons, please.
Hi there, yes, thanks for coming. Um, I just had a question about what kind of commercial that you envision there. Because I think there's some concern that, you know, it could, might not fit with the, with the, uh, the area. So if you could comment on that.
Yeah, so we, we have, um, mentioned the, um, you can, you think about, you know, basically boutique, um, uh, think small, think artisan. You know, very similar to what, what you see, uh, in the neighborhood now in terms of, uh, not, not the same, but, uh, but complimentary. So again, um, uh, it, it could be professional offices, it could be, um, art shops, uh, it could be a pet store. So, um, So, yeah, I would say, think, think about community, neighborhood-based businesses. Yoga studios, wellness locations, massage, physiotherapy, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see no further questions. Is there anybody else speaking from the proponents' perspective?
Yes.
Thank you.
I injured my foot here, so I've asked this little here to, allow me to sit down if you don't mind and adjust the screen so you can see me.
Yeah, hello. Can you, could you state your name and give your address for the public record, please?
Yes, yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, council. My name is Hans Rollins and I'm the owner of Grayroll's Murrayville Developments. I reside at 16252278 Avenue. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about our proposal and also share with you a personal side. When our family lived on 216th Street, just south, south of subject property, I find myself passing through the five corners of Murrayville quite often. And every time I will look at this vacant lot and think to myself, it would be a dream for one day for my wife, my wife Noel and I to buy and build a beautiful project in this unique historical area of Langley. Well, that dream came true two and a half years ago when Noel and I bought the property. We're a team of two, small boutique builders who are very passionate about building lifestyles in our communities. With the extraordinary help and guidance from planning and heritage. And along with our architect from Sightlines, Gord, we're able to do just that, to create a thoughtful, well-designed project, paying homage to the existing history and the heritage of Murrayville's five corners. Having raised two children and them off to university now, Noel and I are officially considered empty nesters. It was never our intention to build this project to sell out or to rent out, but instead paved the way to becoming a resident again in Langley and to possibly run a business together while living upstairs. Perhaps a flower shop or a small mercantile. Murrayville Mercantile. Murrayville General Store has a bit of a ring to it. In fact, as Gord mentioned, historically, in the 1930s, the property was home to a general store and stables. We want limited commercial uses in place. No franchises or noisy businesses. Shops that are walkable and businesses that complement existing commercial and B and B. I'd ask of you if you can alter to page six on the drawings I mailed out to you, please? Do you have that information in front of you? On page six, the rain garden provides a natural green buffer for the B and B and to protect its use and enjoyment. It also maintains and preserves its view from Old Yale Road. We picture the community space, a place where people can come and visit and see our wayfinding sign showing direction to the heritage buildings in the neighborhood. A place where visitors staying at the B and B can walk to and experience the rich history of Murrayville. A place where people can purchase some flowers after enjoying their afternoon tea at Tracy Cakes. A place where we can host the Murrayville Heritage Day exhibit every year. A place where we can put up a community Christmas tree with lights and organize other Christmas festivities while sipping your hot cocoa. Perhaps hosting other events throughout the year that bring a community together. Noel and I want to be a part of that community again. I understand many emails were sent to the township not supporting our project without knowing the correct facts. And we've heard from some who have spoken against our proposal here tonight. I hope everyone can take their comments with a grain of salt. Please try to see past the negative comments and emails recently submitted. But instead, listen to the positive ones and how our design fits well for everyone in the neighborhood and beyond. We hosted two public information meetings and have listened to the residents to incorporate their comments and concerns into our redesign. We have listened and we had an overwhelming amount of support. We feel we put our best foot forward and have created a thoughtful, well-designed project that benefits existing neighborhood now and for generations to come. What is history? History is defined as the whole series of past events connected to someone or something. Tonight, with your approval, we have an opportunity to continue history. On behalf of Noel and I, we'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I see a question for you from Counselor Richter.
Yes, thank you very much for that overview. And I just want to confirm that I did hear that you intend to live in the property.
Yes, that's correct, Counselor Richter. Just mentioning here that Noel and I are officially empty nesters. And we feel it'd be almost like a homecoming for us. We'd like to explore the possibility even running a business downstairs while residing upstairs and become, went back to the community.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I see no further questions.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know if there's anybody else? No. All right. So I think that concludes all the presentations and delegations from tonight's public hearing. So thank you very much for your questions and I will entertain a motion to terminate the meeting.
Termination.
All right, thank you, everybody, and good night.
Good night, good job.